...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will start tonight's meeting with a public hearing regarding, would that be the 2016 budget? The 2016 budget. Robin, if you'll address that for us tonight, please.
Notice is hereby given to the taxpayers of Atlanta, Hampton County, Indiana, that the proper offices of Atlanta Civil Town will conduct a public hearing on the year 2016 budget. Following the meeting, any ten or more taxpayers may object to a budget, tax rate, or tax levy by filing an objection petition with the proper offices of the Atlanta Civil Town not more than seven days after the hearing. The objection petition must identify the provisions of the budget, tax rate, or tax levy to which taxpayers object. If a petition is filed, Atlanta Civil Town shall adopt with the budget a finding concerning the objections in the petition and testimony presented. Following the aforementioned hearing, the proper officers of Atlanta Civil Town will meet to adopt the following budget. Public hearing date is today. The adoption meeting date will be Tuesday, September 22nd at 7:00 p.m. here in the Town Hall. Estimated civil max levy is ninety-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-nine. Rainy day fund, seven thousand. General fund, two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. Local roads and streets, forty thousand. Motor vehicle highway, seventy-nine thousand seven hundred. For a total of three-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Maximum levy is one-hundred thousand. The current tax levy is ninety-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars. This is telling the taxpayers what we feel like we need to operate properly. Doesn't mean that's what we'll get.
Any questions tonight regarding this budget? Do I hear a motion when we close this public hearing?
I motion to be closed, public hearing.
Second.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our regular meeting this evening. I'll read the minutes from the last meeting. I know there was some discussion. We'll just talk about that right now. There was some discussion at our last meeting about foregoing the reading of the minutes. How does everyone feel about that tonight? When I say everyone, I'm talking about the public. Do you folks?
I wasn't here last meeting, so I can't sit here and hear them.
Do you guys want to hear the minutes read each meeting?
Well, we're the only ones that ever show up, so we know what happened. Maybe people that come once in a while want to know. I don't have any experience either.
What about having a written for everybody?
They're available too, for a copy, if anybody would like to, you know, if we didn't read them, they're available for public record. Anybody's welcome to have a copy of them to read yourself if you'd like, if we were to go that way.
Well, if you could make some copies to put out at the next meeting, for me, that would be sufficient. And then we could just, you know, if you put them up there or on the table up there, then we could just, like, I wasn't here last meeting, so I could just go pick one up and write it.
Yeah, after, you know, we all review these and approve them, then it would become public record until they're actually officially approved. If there's no corrections or objections, they're not officially approved minutes. So after we approve them, then Robin can make copies if there's any corrections.
But at least you can just use this as what happened.
Yeah.
Correct. Well, and Cisro put out unofficial minutes, and they say that anyone coming in can pick up.
Okay.
And it's clear that they're not official, because you guys have to act on them. And then if you want the official ones, you can always get those once Robin makes revisions.
Or you can write on your own copy.
Yeah.
If they need to change it or corrections, so.
Okay, beginning this evening, then that's what we'll do. We'll forego the reading of the minutes of each meeting, and we'll move ahead to conduct business. And if anyone has any questions, you can look at the minutes from the previous meeting. Okay? You guys have a chance to look over the minutes from the last meeting? Any additions or corrections?
I motion to meet second.
Is there a second?
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Andy is absent tonight, so we will forego the reading of his report. You do have a copy of it in front of you.
Has, has Betts been out there maybe all this past week?
Yes. Actually, they had a site meeting. It was at last Wednesday, I believe it was, and the inspector was there. And they now have got the footer board for the building. I spoke with Andy earlier today, and the electrician was out looking at the electrical, and also the well guy has been out, I believe, looking at the location and to see if they're ready for him to come in and drill a well where the line's going into the slab. So, yeah, they're moving right along now.
Good.
With Betts out there.
I think if they were notified that they weren't going to receive any funds to proceed, that...
Right. And they did, once work proceeded, we did okay, a pay application for them. They've gotten quite a bit done since our last meeting. Tom Schubert was supposed to be here this evening to discuss that, and obviously, he's not here.
Yeah, Andy contacted him. Basically, he was going to be attending the meeting, because he was under impression. We still hadn't signed, or forwarded the pay request. And that's what his concern was, and Andy called him and talked to him, so he just, you know, that's why he was coming to discuss where the pay voucher, and since Andy told him that it was sent in, you know, he just didn't need to, Andy wouldn't be here tonight. So he did make contact, Andy did make contact with Tom.
Okay. All right, Murray Dixon is absent tonight. He's our big unfortunate officer, so we'll have nothing from that. Robin, do you have anything tonight?
I just have one quick thing. I have not got an official quote back yet, but I want to put in for a grant through. It goes, I don't even have it in front of me. It will go through our phone company and then go through, it's a terrible thing, I don't know what it is, but it's, it's a national grant. It's a long shot. It's a five-thousand-dollar grant, and it would allow us to put in a P.A. system that we could use during the festival. The catch is, it's probably going to be about a nine-thousand dollars. Nine, he said he would keep it under ten thousand, the quote, but I have to submit it by September 1st, so I just wanted to know if that was okay with everybody, because the festival would have to kick in about four or five thousand dollars.
I think, I think that's needed. I really do want to know how the rest of you feel, but...
I do too.
I agree.
And if you could, you know, inquire that now, that would be, that'd pay for over, pay for half of it. No one else would try.
Right.
I would proceed with that, then.
I'll help you with the letter of support.
Oh, thank you.
Great, huh?
Yeah. I'll take the phone out.
I suppose we ought to have a motion for that.
I motion, Robin, go ahead and go through with that.
Yeah, a second.
A second.
Oh, now I have to get ahead of myself some time.
So when is that to be awarded?
By the end of December. It's, the phone company actually sends out the information, and then they'll actually send a letter to support, you know, saying they'll support this project, but, come across my desk, I thought, you know that?
Definitely, definitely.
That's all I have.
All right. Well, we'll move on to old business tonight.
I have two items. The first, you should each have a copy. It's a rough draft of a letter I've drafted to go to Ms. Young. As you're aware, Ms. Young and us have once again failed to reach an agreement on how to proceed forward. Commissioner Harebrant tried to help us. He met with her, he met with people from Tipton County, and the meeting was cordial, but we're still at the same impasse. And so I drafted a letter putting her on notice in regard to using any representation that she is a part of the town or the festival, because she is not using those, that name or logo, which is property of the town, or giving the impression that she's somehow connected, because that's also, could be deemed as her presenting herself as an employee, volunteer, connected to the town, and having some sort of authority. And so it's a cease and desist letter, basically. And it would give her official notice, and then we would see, and hopefully, she would comply with that. If my proposed language looks correct, there's, I've cut already one grammatical revision I need to make, I can put this together and send it to her via certified mail.
Everyone had a chance to read that?
That one sounds pretty good, so.
Straight to the point?
Yeah.
Well, and she, she can have her event, she can advertise it, but she can't use Atlanta, and she can't use New Earth Festival. She can call anything she wants, and she can't say at the same time as to sneak it in, because she doesn't have the town's permission to do any of that.
I just got a question here on this one, one here, where it says that she made the representation at the Tipton County Commissioners Meeting, it was in their minutes. Has that been verified? Because in the Tipton paper, that was what was going around, she did represent herself as Atlanta Earth Festival committee person, and then in the paper, there's a retraction in the paper later on.
Okay.
So I don't know that that's actually in the minutes, so if we're going to send it, and, you know, it's going to be stated that it is actually in the minutes, I'd like to verify that.
Okay. I will check that, and if not, then I'll change it.
If it's in there, fine, leave it, but if it's not in their minutes, I think we need to strike that.
Okay.
Right there out. There was something, I know that was, it was said, that, you know, I wasn't at that meeting, but I heard later after that Tipton County meeting that it was stated by her, and that's how she introduced herself and represented herself at that meeting, and then later on, I heard there was a, that's what was in the newspaper.
Right.
And there was a retraction in the paper that's not correct. So I just think we need to...
I think I recall that now that you say that.
So just to be, just to be on the safe side, I want to make sure all of our information here is accurate.
Okay. If there's nothing else, then I'll make that revision, check that fact, and then we'll move forward with that and get it out tomorrow to her. The one other item I wanted to discuss is, listen for me, there was a discussion about options with park. I would recommend, depending on how the, there are a number of options for how the town can handle the park. The town can own it outright, the town can create an LLC that owns and operates the park.
The ballpark.
The ballpark, I'm sorry. The baseball field. And the town can adopt an ordinance that sets out basic rules, and that ordinance can also identify that the town can set a policy. I would recommend that that be the route to go, because it's easier to change a policy than an ordinance. You don't have to advertise it each time, and that way, if little things come up, we can, at a meeting, oh, we never thought about this issue, we can make a tweak to the policy for usage of that field. You know, the one reason to maybe make it an LLC is sometimes that helps with liability issues if there's a concern, because you'd have to sue the LLC, not the town, even though at the end of the day, you know, the town would ultimately, could get sued for something out there. You know, but a general ordinance that says, sets out general rules, and then policy for usage, and all the things the town wants to see, would be the approach I'd recommend. And we still want to make certain that our insurance covered that field, even if we set it up as an LLC, just in case there's ever a claim, someone slides into a base and breaks their leg, or, or anything like that, because even though most of those claims aren't going to go anywhere, we're still out the money it takes getting it to the point that it's dismissed, which could be ten grand or something. And so it's better to make certain that we've got the coverage than, than not.
So we'd have to provide a sign or a poster of some kind with the general rules or policy concerning all the premises?
Well, we could put up a sign with the general rules, you know, like no unauthorized use of field.
Yeah.
And then if they want to come and get a detailed policy, they would come, we could say, see, you know, clerk treasurer's office, and they could get a printed-out copy that tells them all of that.
Weren't we talking about more like an agreement between the town and the...
The association.
The association?
Okay.
Something like that.
Kind of like, it would be similar like Arcadia.
Yeah.
Be similar to Arcadia. We own that ball line, and then it's town property, and we maintain it even, and, you know, the youth league has use of it, and they basically control who plays down there what nights, and they do all the scheduling and everything.
Okay.
Their own insurance.
Okay.
So it's probably somewhere along the lines of similar to the way Arcadia's is set up, because it's a real similar situation.
Yeah, the town doesn't really want to run.
Well, I was surprised when I saw that. I was like, that's a lot of work. Well, that'd be easy too, because Cisro has the same thing with the ball fields down there. To take the, an agreement like that, and enter that with the association, we need to make sure they, one, have legally created themselves as an entity, and then, which they need to provide proof, and then proof of insurance. And we can put that all in the agreement and sign it with them, and make it a year-to-year agreement that gets renewed based upon them keeping up their end of it. That'd be a lot easier.
I know I asked, I think I asked this question last week. We are currently covered by the town's insurance. That was something we did early on.
Right. We were covered before we were legal, legally owned it even.
So that part's, that part's taken care of, so.
That way, if there's kids actually out there playing and not in the league, it's still covered. Yeah. We're adults, big kids, little kids. Yeah, I could bring, I could email a draft and bring it, you know, because I'm going to guess it'd be very similar to what we use in Arcadia and Cisro for those fields.
And then probably the policies still for, like, other groups that would like to use football on that.
Yeah.
Like ritz men, men's league.
Yeah, and Arcadia has something similar like that too, because I know they did, like, state, they hosted the state championship games and stuff down there after the normal league, so that was an additional group that came in.
Well, yeah, and that's an early also for the little leagues, so.
I think, like I say, the other two towns have got something similar to like what we're looking at, if we can get their information, maybe put stuff together, and then go from there and get with Rick, and see what their agreement he's wanting to do, and what he wants to...
Yeah.
Offers his services for use of the field, or how we might look at that agreement.
You have anything else here?
No, not, well, actually, there was one other item, 315 Railroad Street. The property that Andy believes is an unsafe building, and it's in bankruptcy court. If we want to proceed against it as an unsafe building, we have to just follow the same statute. Now, ultimately, we're going to send notice to the court, and the court may say, you can't do anything until this matter's decided, but generally, our power would trump the court in a public safety situation. Well, we also have the health department's... Yeah.
It's been condemned as of the last meeting.
Yes. Well, now, when you say condemned, is the health department going to try to tear it down?
There's a notice down there.
Okay. They condemned it.
I don't know if they, Andy contacted them, so I don't know if they just came in and done their part as far as what their authority is to condemn it, so that would help us proceed with it. I don't know. That was Andy's discussion with the health department.
Because under the unsafe building code, he has to make a finding and give them notice, and tell them the date that they can show up if they want to contest that. We would send copy to any mortgage or lien holders, and then come here, and the council would make that a final order. If they don't show up, if no one requests a hearing or contests it in court, then the town can go ahead and, and take bids, and go through it, and bulldoze the property. It's just a matter of following those steps.
Now, with that being said, how does the town get reimbursed, or how does the town go about not legally owning that property and we condemn that and bulldoze it down? Does that still stay in the bankruptcy, and it's still up for sale?
Yeah, the town would become a lien holder.
So we would just put the lien on for our involvement in it?
Yeah, you would put the lien on it, and then at whatever point in the future that property got sold, and those property taxes were collected, the town would get it. So it's similar, like when we were talking about Donovan's and Arcadia, the town essentially has to front the money, and then we'll get it back at some point in the future, but you don't know when.
Roberta?
Yeah.
You've got the information. I'm getting it secondhand, so go ahead.
All of Nick's stuff went at sheriff's sale Thursday. His house and everything, it went in there, and some, one of these realty company things, you know, that go in and buy, bought it, and they were asking seven-seventy-one thousand, and they got one-ninety-nine thousand.
What?
And that's according to the sheriff's.
A hundred-and-ninety-nine thousand for a condemned house?
No, all his properties are tied in there.
He's got several, he's got several properties.
Including the general office and stuff?
Yeah. So you can go through the sheriff's office and find that and see what, in their sheriff's sale thing.
Well, and that's one more party to give notice that this is going to.
Some American, first American, or real American or something like that.
I wonder if they, if that was in bankruptcy, I wonder if that was included.
Nope.
I wonder if that house was excluded, being it was tied up bankruptcy. Can they do any, do a sale if it's in bankruptcy?
Usually not.
That's what I was thinking, anything, something tied up bankruptcy, you can't take legal action on it, it's got a set. So that house, if it's in bankruptcy, may not be included in that sheriff's sale. That's something you have to research.
Yeah, I can call the jail and talk to, it's Tim Garner's wife who runs all the sheriff's sales, and she can tell me what addresses were included.
Yeah.
And if 315 wasn't, then it's still sitting there.
Should we go ahead and proceed with the letter of notification to the bank and to the property owners and get that started? You know, because we're just going to have to come up with the funds if it comes down to the bad shape as that is, and the kids getting in it.
What'll happen, Andy will have to generate a written report that says that and declares it, and I can give him the format, and then that's what we send out.
Okay.
And then on that, we'll pick a date like one month from tonight or whatever, depending when we mail it, and that date, anyone can show up who has an interest to debate us in the hearing, and then you guys can make the final decision.
If you can get that draft up here, Andy's in conference until Friday, he won't be back till Friday, so.
Maybe you might want to get hold of the health department, too.
And he can maybe look at it first of the week or something, and get that together, and we can move forward with this. I know he had a lot of concerns about the mold and the way that structure is framed up. It wasn't ever done properly, and the roof is about ready to cave in originally, just from the way it was built, and now that the rain's in there, the water and damage and stuff's even weakening it more so, and he's afraid that ceiling's going, that whole roof's going to fall in. So we need to move with this pretty quick.
Well, and this is the one where the water was running for a long time, or something?
Kids went in and turned water on, plugged all the sinks up, and flooded the house, plus now the roof's been pouring in and leaking, and there's mold, and that thing's so bad, and there's, it's so bad, there's mushrooms growing out of the carpets and off the walls and everything, and it's just covered, all the rooms are covered with mold. The kids are getting in there playing and painting, and just tried to board it up, and he said even after he boarded it up, he went back down, and he was, he could see that there'd been more vandalism the minute after he'd even tried to secure it, so they're still getting in there. So we need to do something with it. Like I said, he did contact the health department, and they've condemned it, you know.
Anything else?
I don't know if this is in their old business, new business, but it was in Andy's report here. You can see that on the second page.
The person quit.
Yeah.
I think we should prosecute the child.
We had more vandalism over at the gazebo, and it's one of the kids that was involved with the vandalism last year, and that was up here, and they never did make restitution, you know, I mean, we dealt with them, and we offered to give them community service so that the parents didn't have to pay for it, and we had to pay to paint all the equipment over there, we had to paint the gazebo floor and everything, and all the trim on the gazebo from where they painted it.
I think they should be prosecuted this year.
Well, this kid's one of them that was involved last year that never did show up to do anything, and he's been in other incidents in town throughout, you know, complaints and things, and this time, there was actually a witness over there, and talked to him, you know, told me he shouldn't be doing that, and he's, told her she couldn't tell him what to do, and continued to do it, and started ramming his bike in, doing more damage with her standing right there witnessing. You know, this kid don't seem to get it, so I would, I asked Andy to have Robin just send an email to Dennis Quackenbush, and she did, and I guess he's coming up, the office is going to come up either tomorrow or Thursday, and look into this. I, I think that this kid needs to go down to juvie, and let him talk to somebody down there, because apparently, us bringing him up here, trying to give him a break and everything, ain't getting through to him, and the parents don't seem to care, or they also had to make him come over to do some community service, since we were giving him a break by not making him pay the bill. And I know, I don't know what the total cost was, but I know it wasn't cheap for us to hire out that painting and everything else, and that was exposed aggregate over there in the gazebo. Now we got paint on the floor that we had to cover it up with, so now we're going to have a permanent maintenance problem over there, you know, we're going to constantly have to paint that floor because of this exposed aggregate, it's maintenance-free. And now, due to the vandalism from last year, now we're going to have to paint that every other night it turns around, and I think that with this kid being, things I heard and the way he was acting, I, you know, I think that he just needs to go down and talk to somebody else that maybe can get the point across to him. So I just wanted to bring that up, because I know that Andy called me, and he was real upset about it, and this kid's been an issue around town, and other, like I said, other issues going on.
Well, I'm thinking this, this kid, the question is, he's running around with some other kids, you know, they kind of run, and I think if the town made an example of this one boy, and rightfully so, maybe that's, you know, have an effect on the other kids as well.
From what I'm hearing and seeing, it seems like this kid's the leader of the pack, and I think the other ones are going to follow suit with him if nothing's being done, and they see that they can do whatever they want and nothing. I know the police officer did come up and went and talked to him, and made the kid come down and apologize, but, you know, he came up there and apologized last year, and it was nothing but a joke.
I think the ban on the park in itself is really going to be ineffective concerning him.
Well, I...
You know, if that's all you want to do, just ban it in the park, that's not enough, I don't think.
Yeah, I think he needs to go to juvie.
I don't know if, by law, if he is ordered by the police or the, or the courts that he is banned from the parks and stuff, if he's over there and he's caught again, if they, it would be trespass on him?
Yeah, if he is ordered, even if it's public property, that he cannot go on it, like a park, it's trespassing. And the court could make, if they, if they charge him with vandalism, they could make one of his release conditions that you do not set foot in that park, and if they see you, you violated your release condition, and they could even detain him, depending on what the circumstances are.
I think that we need to request that he be banned out of the park. From the, some of the things I heard that he was saying to some of the little girls that were over there playing, I think that he definitely does not need to be around a bunch of old kids.
He should be charged with vandalism and banned from the park then.
No, I, you know, I guess we'll see after the officer comes up in Thursday, but I just wanted to bring that up to everybody's attention, that what, what all that was involved in that part of Andy's report.
Any other old business tonight? Okay, we'll move on to new business. Any new businesses this evening? Anyone from the floor?
For those that don't know me, because I've never been to a town board meeting to complain before, my name's Margaret Quarter, I live on South Central Street, in town. My name's Margaret Porter. I live on South Central Street in town. I've lived here forty-two years. There's two or three things I wanted to bring up. One of them is the alley behind our homes. I mean, there are weeds as tall as buildings. There's weeds up into or brush up into the uh electrical wires and things. I have never, you know, in all the years I've lived here, ever seen it so bad in behind our homes. Um Jim and I bought the house next door, uh tore it down in order to you know, uh get rid of trash, let's put it that way. We can't afford to buy all of them. You know, I mean, it's just, it's just that simple, you know? Um so you know, I I don't know what can be done, but I do know something needs to be done. Because the whole side uh that I live on, all these people take care of their properties, you know? And when you work your butt off to clean your property and keep it up and then you look out your backyard, that's not fun. That's not fun. So you know, that's just something that that I wanted said. The next thing.
Oh, let me, let me uh reply to that there. Um there's a contractor that's hired that's gonna be going down some of these alleys and clearing things like that out. Now, I don't know how far, you know, this stuff is grown on the uh property of the adjacent neighbors you're referring to. I don't know how far up on the property it goes, but I know within the town alley right of ways, which are about sixteen foot wide, we do have a contractor that's gonna be going down these alleys and clearing the town alley parts out. Uh the other, the other part that's on their property, if there are weeds and stuff, we, our code enforcement officer can go down and address that and have them to cut those down because that is on a violation of our ordinance.
That's what I was gonna um ask you. You know, I do know that like if someone don't mow their yard, the town has to mow it. You know, then that goes against them.
We have weed ordinance too.
Be the same with the weeds.
Yeah, we have, it it is covered under weeds a certain height that he can have them to clean them up. If not, the town will go in and then okay.
I mean, it's just, it's unreal.
We will uh you know, we can bring us up to Andy on that part and have him to go down and look at that alley and the contractor. Uh I seen that in here somewhere, said he's gonna be back. Where did I see that at? We're wrong, hammock. Uh he'll be back next week to finish the tree work. And that's good, that's going down the alley trimming the trees and the bushes and stuff out of the alleys. So he's coming back next week, so we'll have him to check that and cut the town right away out of that alley and then any weeds that's left over, we'll have the code enforcement officer go down and address it.
Yeah, there's beer cans in in all of this garage back there. There's food wrappers and things, you know, I mean, we buy decon out the wazoo to keep it on our property.
Yeah.
And and then, you know, you got this harbor in it, you know, so we're not very happy with it.
Okay.
Okay, the next thing.
Isn't that Jennifer's cat?
Jennifer's cat.
That's Jennifer's cat.
Yeah.
It's it's dinner time.
Open door meeting.
Uh I'm not saying it's this town board because, you know, it's been a while since this happened. The the first part of it. But my son-in-law had a car sitting on his driveway with no plates. He was ordered remove it, okay? My neighbor, which this is recent, was redoing a truck for his grandson. Um and uh he was told that he had to get it off of the driveway or to get it covered. My question is, catty corner from my house on Central Street, there's a house where there's a a four-wheel drive green um truck that's been sitting there almost a year up on Jax with a lawn chair under it. So you know, my point would be if if you're gonna make these rules, everybody.
Well, we, to address that, I'm not sure. I think I know which house you're referring to, but I'm not a hundred percent certain about the green truck. That that house may be in the county jurisdiction. Central Street on the east side, it jogs in and out and it comes down the road and I don't know what the uh corporate limits are on Central without pulling up the map. But I do know like the ball diamond's out and it comes up uh along the street and then it jumps over and it takes in a few houses and then it jumps back out to the street and incorporates. So some of those houses are out. I know if it's the one I'm thinking of, I think that one's out and the next one to it has a lot of stuff sitting around there. That's actually been, he's been cited because I know he is in and he's actually been to court. So that's working and you know, so we, our code enforcement guy is enforcing the ordinances within our corporate limits, but he has no jurisdiction to any of them.
So what do you suggest that we make a complaint?
To the, to the county?
County.
To the county's uh plan commission or the planning department?
If that's it, you know, and I I could have to, I'd have to ask Andy, but I'm pretty sure I know where you're talking about and I think that house
It's right next to the one you're talking about.
Yeah, and I think that house is actually in county jurisdiction.
Yeah, so I work with the guy, the inspector for the county who would come out.
So you're lucky to have everybody here.
Cause our code inspector's actually cited his own father twice and his sister once. So if there's a violation and he'll get it.
Well, it would be, it'd be in the what, four? No, I'm in the five hundred block.
It'd be four, would be four hundred.
Well, I think about half of it is
Four hundred, splits in the middle?
It's between four and five hundred there.
Six hundred is, it's different over at Central.
So where do you live for the the eight free house there on Central?
Oh, I live clear down.
I'm trying to get an idea where you live.
Look, I don't know where this house was just built.
Three houses, three houses.
I live right across the
Oh, okay.
Alan's house is in the county, but Grace Winters to the north and all north clear up to where Art live, that's all town.
Well, i- if you can get to Robin or Andy or one of them can get me the address, if it's in the county, I'll talk to Chuck Kiphart and he could come out and cite it.
Is that county?
Robin. I think that they might be, but I think you're right. I think the light block is not. It's right next door.
Well, I think, I think that's what Andy told.
The south side, uh William Robson's County.
Yeah, if I have the address, I can have him go and inspect the property for you.
We'll have it looked into and if it's in town limits, we'll have the code enforcement officer go down there and I know the code enforcement officer, he's been in corporate limits, he's been writing tickets for every, you know, anybody that's got an un- unregistered vehicle with no license plates on them and things and he's doing everybody.
But you know, you just think
Yeah.
Okay, why some and why not others, you know?
That that's the reason.
That's been there almost a year.
Yeah, I know which truck you're talking about and that, you know, and I, our our code enforcement officer, he's been enforcing it by the book no matter who it is.
Yeah, it should be that way.
And you know, he's come down and talked to me a time or two.
I'm a policeman anymore. I understand that, but it's really terrible. But our street now is like thirty-one.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it is so, she lives close enough, she
So is Indiana.
Yes, and and it's just out of hand, you know? I don't know if uh they're waiting for a little child to come out that side street down there or something and then maybe do something about or what. It's posted thirty mile an hour, but they don't drive it.
What about speed bumps? Can we put in speed bumps?
More stop signs.
We slow them down? Well, I mean.
They put a stop sign, they put a stop sign there a- almost there at Main, one block up, you know, on Central. And uh but once they go through that stop stop sign and you come down my way, I live here on the north side of Central. Uh it's Speed Demon Alley, you know, it's
It's Speed Demon before the stop sign and after the stop sign, just like it is on Indiana Street.
It's been so bad, I actually had a lady uh run over, kill my dog. And uh she was texting, she was doing way over the speed limit, but uh I tell you, I've been calling the sheriff about it. I've been calling sheriff complaining, telling them, I tell them where I live.
She can snag their plates?
And they they come down and they do what they can, you know, and there again, you gotta catch somebody in the act, you know? But I noticed the worst part of it is when people getting off of work around uh between three and five, you know? A lot of people use Central as a shortcut rather than coming down, coming down Catalina Road and cut down Central. There's a one-stop sign, soft line there and then they cut out that way.
There's so many little children though.
If you call the sheriff, you tell them, I think the more complaints uh the sheriff hears, you know, they're
Send it to the paper.
Open door policy.
But don't be afraid to call sheriff and 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 make a complaint.
Well, my man, I had a couple of them stopped there in the house and, you know, I'd be out working in the flowers. I had a couple of them stop and ask, was everything okay, you know? And I thought they they knew something, I didn't know, you know? Uh I said yes, but after they leave, I get to thinking, you know, I should have complained, you know, to them.
When that officer comes up tomorrow or Thursday, could you mention that and ask them if they can patrol Central and uh Indiana Street? Maybe even a speed limit sign or one of those uh
We've, yeah, he's done it before.
Get one of those. That seemed to help quite a bit. Those signs that tell you their speed as you're running through there, they have some of those. They brought those in town here a year or so ago. It helped it quite a bit.
Yep, well, and actually, if the police officer's coming, he can issue a citation to that truck too.
I don't remember that.
For not, for being parked out there without a license, the one on that driveway.
It's got a license.
And it's given, is it county, is this?
If it's in the county, he can issue it to them.
But is there, do there ordinances or the statute states that they have to be registered?
Mm-hmm.
Really?
Same as ours, it's state law and it's county. So he could go and issue that while he's here, if it's in the county.
Johnny, is Ron gonna do the tree in front of the post office?
I don't know what all I think, I think that's actually on the list to come out because I think it was dying, they I think that Andy mentioned that that one, he wanted to just take it completely out. So I think that is on there. I think that, I think that is on the list, but I don't know. I know that the alleys and then there was trees and Ron come in and he took down some of the trees and he had some other stuff due to that storm that went through Tipton that he was covered up and he went back up there for a while and that's the reason he didn't finish up here. But he, apparently Andy's gotten a hold of him, he'll be back next week. Anything else from the floor tonight?
Are you having a festival meeting before the meeting?
Yes.
In September?
Yes. First meeting?
The first one?
First Tuesday?
Six o'clock. Sure will. Sure will. Be the last one before the meeting. It's here already.
Unbelievable.
And I have to go to Munster on Wednesday night and drive back home on Thursday and then all that stuff starts on Friday.
Friday.
Yeah. Um I do need to ask, um are we gonna be allowed to set up our tent on Friday? Or does it have to be Friday night or Saturday morning or?
Property owner, I mean, it's on your personal property.
No, 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 it's for mended hearts.
Oh, okay.
It's for the health area.
What section are?
They're here on the public awareness, the, on the first block of Main. Jennifer will send you her
She's got that schedule.
She'll get you all of that. Cause I'm not sure what
You guys have my email address?
No, I don't, I don't, I don't
I'll give you my cards.
She'll, I don't know what side of the street she has you on, so I don't know what time it's set up, Tom, if you
All right, anything else this evening? Appreciate everyone coming. I hear a motion that he signed a claim to a meeting. Your second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.